So this is a public meeting in the city of Dennis Springs, city council held January the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, six P. M. Here in the courtroom of the municipal building at one sixteen North Range Avenue here in Dennis Springs, Louisiana. All notices have been posted and the media has been notified as required by law. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Councilman Poole to lead us in the invocation and pledge.
Thank you, Mayor.
Privilege. Let's pray. Father, we're humbled again to invite you into this chamber as we go about the business of this wonderful community this evening. God, we just ask that we would be receptive, even aware of your call, of your presence, God, that all that we do would be to your honor and glory, Father, and that at the end of the day, your confidence would shine upon this community again and again and again as you find us good and faithful servants of the resources that you give us. So, Father, we thank you for this leadership, the administration. We thank you for all of the employees that make this such a great place and run so smoothly. And we thank you mostly, Father, for the many people that call it home. We ask that you'll find us worthy of all that you do and all that you provide. So we love you as we give you thanks again and invite you into these chambers this evening. We ask this by the power of your Spirit and in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, let's call the roll, please.
Dugoss, here. Gilbert?
Here.
Lam Williams, here. Poole?
Here.
Wesley?
Here.
All right, before we get into the meat and potatoes of the council meeting tonight, just want to bring everybody up to speed. Last week was a difficult week for everybody, but I will say that as far as your city employees and your city utilities, you know what, we did good. We only had one house that had a frozen gas meter and the meter itself was covered up with snow. And once the guys kicked away the snow and everything, it started to work just fine. And I think one or two of our commercial buildings had some busted water lines out front. So we were very lucky, no serious accidents to report. And so-
Right outside Willows.
God was with us, sir.
Right outside the Willows.
Is that where the accident was? There was one there.
Okay, yeah.
So anyway, that's the good news. Before we get into item one, we're going to talk about, we need to lift the agenda. Item number eight is going to be an ordinance levying within the city of Dennis Springs, state of the state of Louisiana, a taxes up to six and seventy-five hundredths percent. It's going to be the taxes upon the rent or fee charged for the occupancy of the hotel rooms within the city, effective April the first, twenty twenty-five, and providing other matters in the connection with their with. So that's going to be item number eight.
Motion to lift the agenda to that effect, Mayor?
Madam Clerk, do we need to have a second intervo- Okay, second by Lam Williams. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugoss?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams, yes. Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
And then item nine is another one that I think Jim wants to-
Yeah, I'd like to lift the agenda to discuss section ten, section one oh two of the location restrictions for our beverages. That's item nine.
Inter motion and a second to allow him to-
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Gilbert?
Second.
Second by Dugoss. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugoss?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Here.
Yes.
Lam Williams, yes. Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Okay, good. Item one on the agenda tonight is approve as published the official journal minutes of the January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting.
Much different.
Motion by Gilbert. Second by Poole. Wesley? Second by Wesley. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugoss?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Item two, authorize a public hearing for a noise variance for an outdoor event at the Dennis Springs High School football stadium. So we're going to authorize a hearing. We have the pastor of First Baptist Church with us this evening, the Reverend Leo Miller is going to be here to talk to us. Would you mind coming up and just share what it's about, sir? And your name and address, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Leo Miller. My address is two nine seven oh eight Livingston, Louisiana, Lidle Street, Livingston, Louisiana. Thank you for the opportunity to come speak to you. We're going to be hosting, our parish, parishwide, we're going to be hosting an evangelistic crusade at Dennis Springs High School Jacket Stadium, March the sixteenth through the nineteenth of this year, twenty twenty-five. The services, that's Sunday through Wednesday, the services will begin at seven, and we think they'll conclude eight thirty, but I put on the application from seven to nine. We have an evangelist from Atlanta, Georgia named Rick Gage will be here. And we have probably fifty to sixty churches right now that are partnering with us to do this. So most of them are coming from the west side of the parish, and we were looking for the largest venue in the parish to host us. And Dennis Springs High School Jacket Stadium seats five thousand people on the home side. So that's why we saw approval from the school and they gave that. And now we're doing some necessary things we need to do to be able to do that in the city as well, so.
So it's like an old time revival?
Sort of, yes. We hope to have some celebrities come in to give some testimony, and we're going to have some popular contemporary Christian artists singing too. And so, and so it's going to be a, yes, an old time maybe revival.
Okay. What's your plan B for bad weather?
Plan B is pray again. Pray harder.
So it's seven to nine for all three nights?
Yes.
And the only reason for the variance is it's the noise variance?
Right.
That's the reason for it, okay.
Well, I listen to James every Friday night sitting at the house, so they all agree in it as far as I'm concerned.
So I have one other question. We're authorizing the public hearing, there's not a date on here, it will be at the next council meeting?
It's going to be, yeah, the twenty-fourth.
That is-
I'll make a motion.
Wait. Not the next council meeting?
Well, it has to be on-
Wait a month, okay, March twenty-fourth. February twenty-fourth.
Yes.
And you know you have to attend that meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And same.
You're in trouble. Billy let me whistle.
We had a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion by Jeff?
Second.
Second by you. Mr. Gilbert, I'm sorry.
Dugoss?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
See you next month.
All right, item, let's see. Item number three, approve a request from Mr. Singh with Busy Beef Food and Gas Inc. Request a retail beef high, that's a high alcohol permit for the business located at one thousand Florida Avenue Southeast, Dennis Springs, Louisiana. That is the Texaco gas station and subway on the corner of Pete's Highway and Florida Boulevard. Sir Paul Kay is the owner, and they have sold that store to Mr. Singh. And they currently sell all three levels of alcohol. Everything's been, according to Ira, everything's been taken care of.
Motion approved.
Motion by Dugoss.
Second.
Second by Wesley. Madam Clerk, call for the votes.
Dugoss? Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Item four, authorize a public hearing for special use permit for the purpose of a townhome development on track B one dash A and remainder of track A located at section fifty-nine, T six S, R two E, GLD, city of Dennis Springs, Livingston Parish, Louisiana, SUP one one seven dash two four, to be held February the twenty-fourth in the courtroom of the municipal building requested by Brad Markov Construction LLC at five, six dime Florida Avenue Southwest. And this is going to be held again on February the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lam Williams to approve. Second by Wesley. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugoss? Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Mr. Markov, Brad, you're welcome to stay if you'd like, but we're excited. Thank you, sir. Item five, introduce an ordinance and authorize a public hearing for an ordinance to amend section one point oh two of article one of the Dennis Springs zoning commission, ordinance of nineteen ninety-eight as amended, city ordinance one zero zero one by adding there to paragraph one ninety from R one residential to C three commercial to I one industrial on parcel number zero three six five seven one eight and parcel number zero three six three five six four, located in section sixty-eight, T seven S dash R two E, GLD, city of Dennis Springs, Livingston Parish, Louisiana, R Z dash four five three, to be held February the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five in the courtroom of the municipal building, requested by Wardle Brothers LLC, twenty-five hundred Florida Avenue Southwest.
Motion to authorize public hearing?
Motion by Lam Williams.
Second.
Second by Dugoss. Madam Clerk?
Dugoss?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Item six, approve payment application number one in the amount of two hundred thirty-one thousand, eight hundred seventy-six thousand dollars and no cents to Feliciaan Welders Inc. for the L S sixteen gas improvement project, Hillenhead Road to Juven Road. Dara is with us, Daryl Lambres with us this evening? And I think we have a note to approve?
Yes, we have.
Okay. That's the newest section that we just did.
Is it's that ongoing improvement project in the greater Dennis Springs area to give a little bit of capacity to Juven Road.
Some sections of it are currently in operation, am I right?
Yes.
Because Daryl referred to-
We should wrap everything up in next meeting, hopefully, I'll get my-
Daryl referred to it this morning and said, that's the best two million dollars we ever spent. So, okay, so he's happy.
Good.
Especially with the cold weather.
Especially with the cold weather, that's right.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Wesley.
Second.
Second by Lam Williams. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugoss?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Item seven, approve payment application number eight in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars and ninety cents to L King Company LLC for the Big Neck Waterwell Project. There's a letter in your file, Chad, because it has the flu tonight, so you recommend that they would go ahead and approve payments.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lam Williams.
Second.
Second by Gilbert. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugoss?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
All right, number eight. Number eight is going to be- It's just going to be to adopt the sales tax that was passed in the last election on the hotel motel rooms here in the city of Dennis Springs. We've already, last meeting, we verified the vote, and now everything's, all we have to do is just say, yes, we're ready to start April one.
Could I just say something?
Certainly.
For clarification, this will not supplant the budget of either the police or the fire department.
No, it will not.
I have to boot it, so.
Motion, motion by Dugoss?
Second.
Second by Gilbert. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugoss?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Item nine, I'll let Mr. Gilbert take over.
Okay, so I was approached by Tim LeVere, and they have the mustard scene creamery in Dennis Springs. And they, they're a nonprofit that raised money for their ministry, and they serve like wine, they have all this old little alcohol level. One understanding is when they went to renew, somebody pointed out they were having church services there on, you know, on Sundays. And one of the things that we were, I was approached with is that the state wording is a little bit different than our wording for the, you know, for and the way it's worded, it says, our ordinance says that our beverage business are prohibited within two meters feet of a church synagogue, library, playground, school. Whereas in the state ordinance, it says, it says a building exclusively used as a church or synagogue, library, or school. So basically, what I'd like to discuss is changing ours to match the state's saying used exclusively. And just the thought that was pointed out is like, you know, La Chienne Brewery is a public place that people go and, I mean, they got children, you bring your dog, everybody. So if we decide to go for Bible study there, somebody can make the case that we're having a church in this establishment. So I don't, I mean, to me, I don't see the harm in cleaning this up. This is not a church. They just, you know, their whole church service, they're trying to raise money to grow their ministry and take it to the next level. So I wanted to open this up a discussion tonight. I know that not many people had a chance to really discuss it, Robert and I had a little discussion about it, and I've had some minor discussion with others, but I wanted to focus that more to, I want to feedback.
First, there's just a call, so they're selling wine and beer, which means they have a high and low alcohol permit. They don't just have low because wines are low, because wine's in the high under the city, because it is not, beer's the only thing we have is low. Except in La Chienne, they have a special use permit, and we did exceptions on theirs because they're brewery and use those. We, like us, there's just quite a few exceptions. Was their permit gained by us or by the state?
Just not renewed.
Just not, they chose not to renew?
No.
We opted to not-
We chose not to renew.
They got that alcohol permit the first time, when they went to renew it, it was presented that they had. So they've already started the business, opened the business, they've been operating, and then this came up that now it's in question, so they were not allowed to renew their license.
So they had, there was an article that we've written about them, about the new church being there. And that article that was in the newspaper saying that it is a church and also a bar kind of did not go, and that's what kind of started this whole thing. I have to say, that's a little bit different also, because we don't have-
So we didn't have, and we do have the article that shows that they call it a church.
Because we only have restaurants. So I think, I mean, I already had complaints about them being allowed to open with not what is considered by restaurants, a whole kitchen at all. That was already-
That's a different ordinance.
It's a different ordinance, but it applies to that license. So, I mean, I'm just saying, I think there are a few things we may need to look at for their business inclusive. I think, I think this is a little bit more than, I think they're looking at it from that, but there's a lot more, I think, deeper. I'm more than willing to dig through it, but I think it's going to be a little bit more than.
Well, I'm proposing this change, and it will be open for a public hearing, and any of us gets a chance to come speak.
And if I may just throw it out there, this is not really with regard to any business. We're talking about, you're talking about a change in the ordinance. That's it. It's adding five words.
Right.
Boilerplate cut right out of the state law and embedding it into our law, changing building used as a church to building used exclusively as a church. And so that's really the issue, is do we want to change the ordinance to reflect that? It's really not, there happens to be a business impacted by that. But the discussion tonight is about not that business, but about the ordinance. Do we want our ordinance to comply with the state statute?
Yes.
Or do we want to have a higher standard? And we did litigate this whole thing with that man and his wife here, and we knew what they were doing. If nothing's changed, it's-
Right.
It will, will-
I gotta say-
Yeah, well, it's a pass number check.
It has, because there was never a mention of them having a church, that, the business, and I'm sorry.
No, I'm definitely here-
Just want to make sure that everything's on the table and everybody knows what they're talking, what's being discussed. That particular business that was, that was coming in, they applied for a liquor license for a creamery to serve wine, which is a really cool concept. Then they started having, before they got an occupancy, they didn't have occupancy for the structure, but yet they were having services in there on Sunday. And then they finally got their occupancy, and they're, from an occupancy standpoint, from a code standpoint, you're not talking about a whole lot of difference between assembly for, you know, a place of religious worship versus assembly for restaurant. Same amount of bathrooms, same amount of egress, all of that infrastructure is there, and that's fine. It's no big deal. It didn't affect us in one way or the other. It's, it, what happened is what obviously was some of the trigger was now you have a five oh one C three that is a church serving alcohol, and I think that was one of the things that kind of threw up the flag versus where we have a brewery that sometimes has a Bible study inside of it.
Right.
While it seems trivial, it, words are the words, and words have meaning. But, and I don't have a dog in a hundred, it's honestly, what I would love to see is also too, while we're discussing this, if we could get a definition on the books for church, I would love that in a completely different manner. That might help in a couple of the other things that we have going on in the city.
If we, and please correct, Mayor, if I remember when they did have a meeting with them, it was because there was an issue about, hey, if they are having service, like if they're going to do that, if they're not going to be a creamery that also does this and they're a charity that gives money, like, it was like if they started doing all these other things, well, then they're practically a convention center, they're, like, they're not really a restaurant, and we don't have licensing at all for that. So, yeah, I don't know, I get what we're saying, but I think, I don't know, even if we do this, then I don't know if their permit would be applicable anyway.
I don't think we have licenses for churches. I don't think we have business licenses as well.
No, we don't, but if they're a church that's also serving ice cream, that's also doing this, well, are they, you know, like, I don't know what kind of ones that opens up to.
Well, I'm asking, like Robert said, to just one small change to this ordinance. Now, the definition of a church, and you say, and I do know some of the things you're talking about, to define a church, I'm definitely open to that. I do want to sit and talk with you, and I will work with you, tell Stephanie to write this ordinance. I'm good with that, because I'm with you, you know, we do, and I think sometime when you clarify things, people know upfront. This was a little foggy right here. So, you know, this is a situation where, and Robert nailed it, I think, he came here, we think this is a great concept, we, you know, we have approved it, and, you know, they invested their money, they invested the time, and invested in our community, and then they come back and they lose it, and basically, it's a play on words. Now, what you're talking about, about the definition of a church, I definitely, definitely would discuss that thing, because you're right, that could clean up a lot of other issues.
Well, if there's a, if there's a restaurant that also provides room for religious services, is that, as we have our ordinance right now, is there a conflict there?
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly, that's exactly right.
And is it a church?
No.
That serves wine, or is it a wine place that operates as a church? I think there's a difference there. Maybe, what, you use it fifty-one percent of the time?
Yeah.
Maybe.
So, can I speak to a few of these things, just to clarify? Whenever they apply for their business license, when they came in and talked to Ira, they were an ice cream shop that served wine.
Yeah.
She asked, is church, are y'all going to be having church services in here? Because we do have this ordinance that prohibits alcohol being served within three hundred feet of a church. They said, no, we will not be having church services in here. That's what was told at the time of their permit. So that's why they were granted a provisional license to serve under. When it came time for them to renew, you know, you have a couple of months to prove your percentages of what you're serving. And so when it came, those months expired, it was raised that this article has come out saying that they're a church that has a creamery, which is very different than what the business license was, you know, was represented. I mean, they flat out said, no, we're not having church in here. So that's why it was denied. It's not like anybody went out and was seeking to take away something that had previously been granted. When it was granted, it was told, no, we're not a church. So if we do want to let them do that, we make this change to the ordinance, and then they'll be allowed to do that because they're not exclusively used as a church. One issue that that might raise, looking at it from the other side, is what if another church has a quilting circle that comes and meets once a month? Well, then they're no longer exclusively used as a church either. Churches are allowed in residential areas, but if I'm not exclusively used as a church, could it open the door to other ordinances being impacted? I don't know, I haven't done that kind of research yet, I'm just putting all of the thoughts out there. There are also several churches that don't like to follow building codes, and we're having issues with that and with the definition of the church is there. So I, you know, I do like the idea of defining church, I think it's probably already been modified by the Supreme Court, you know, we can find that definition and follow it. But it is a bigger thing than just this. The particular ordinance was also under scrutiny at this time because we had another place applying for an alcohol license that was in three hundred feet of a playground, but not the entrance to the playground. It was within three hundred feet of the fence of the playground. So, you know, they were making the argument, well, if we're not going to strictly apply it to a church, then we don't need to strictly apply it to a playground. And so it gets to this question of, what are we willing to redefine and what are we not, which needs to be answered. I'm fully in support of figuring out that answer, but I just want everybody to have the big picture of-
Well, our ordinance as read right now says we're going to have a church, so you could make the argument that the fence is as a church. So this change would clear it up and would stay the building.
Just so you know, this came up years ago with a bar that was across the street from a playground. The city court, it didn't go past city court, ruled that it had to be three hundred feet within the entrance of the playground. Judge Fordy ruled that, it's been probably twenty years ago now, but that came up. So just so you know, that's how that, that's been interpreted all these years based on that ruling in the city, or at least it was.
I'm just glad you had two points, so just based on what you just said, I think there was a recent discussion that it's three hundred feet, it used to be three hundred feet by the way you traveled.
Right.
Sidewalk across, at the crossing, and come back if there's more than three hundred feet.
To the entrance.
To the entrance.
Yeah.
Now it says, as I understand it, because Stephanie and I looked at that, it was three hundred feet to the next piece, to the next property.
Okay, so it's, there's been a change, I mean, it's been a long time.
Well, because that one in particular didn't have a sidewalk. So that's, I think that's what clarified that for us as well.
So the ordinance says the distance shall be measured as a person walks using the sidewalk from the nearest point, from the nearest point of the property line of the church, synagogue, public library, public playground, or school to the nearest point of the premises to be licensed.
Correct.
So it appears to be a straight line from the property line to the entrance of the premises being licensed.
I don't think it says entrance, does it?
Uh, nearest point, you're right. Nearest point.
That's been changed.
So that's been changed, that's why, that's the only reason I wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, that's a long time.
It will, exactly, exactly.
And this is why I'm going to present a discussion, we didn't have to present discussions, because you-
Sure.
So it's next week, I mean, it's gonna be next week, we want to present the exact content hyping place, to highlight changes, and then we can authorize that for public hearing, and then anyone can come to speak.
I was, okay, so also, I did want to make a quick point also. When they did come before us, like I said, it was a creamery that was providing wines, that it was a restaurant. That this restaurant has not been met. I mean, that's where, a restaurant has to have a whole kitchen, they don't. If they do not meet their sales, if it's not sixty percent, you know, food to forty percent alcohol, it's not happening. So I don't, I understand that this has been brought before us, and it, just because they, when it was denied, this is what we listed, it does not mean there were three other things. So while we can't address this, the fact that they, if they didn't follow the rules from the first meeting, it doesn't mean we go back in and change everything because they invested money. I mean, we ask every single restaurant in this city to follow these rules, and they are much stricter compared to other, to Baton Rouge, everywhere. I mean, we have sixty, forty, and we have no larson city limits. Just because I'm very proud of Ira, thank you so much for enforcing the ordinance, because we do not go in restaurants and say, pull your registers. We do not go in and say, have underage agents go in the Department of Police Department and check if they are selling to underage people. We do not administer servers if they're licensed, we don't do any of that. So it is not that they are given a hard time, that we are overdoing it, we allow the state to do it, they exceed it, and also Baton Rouge, they do it every three months at every restaurant. We do not do it here.
We used to do it.
We used to, yeah, we used to, and when we did, there were, there were plenty of things that came up with restaurants were not following that. So I think the rules are easily accessible, and if you don't follow them, like every other restaurant, and I mean, La Chienne, and they follow, I mean, there were little things that they came in, because they were a brewery, but when they came in, they delivered, and they have delivered, and they have stuck to the rules. So I can't say, I'm sorry, you changed your, your business model, and as this business model, you wouldn't have made it that you are now.
But that's a different ordinance, and I'm all for compliance, I mean, we want to go to the check, I don't think it's a bad idea, I mean-
It's a different ordinance, but the reason you're looking at it, and you said it, because they have bought that in our community, and so we'll look at it. That's not, I mean-
You have the opinion of a restaurateur.
That followed those rules for twenty years.
That's right.
And we worry about it.
Invested, has made the money to follow those rules.
We do.
And Robert, the other comment that you made was that all you're gonna do is take the language from the state and put it into ours. Well, we could write whatever whatever you choose.
Yeah, and I mean, I actually have, and like Jim said, we we talked about it. I was disappointed that we didn't just. When if there's other things that are in that are not in compliance, that is something totally different from from this animal. But if you literally take the text directly out of the state statute, twenty-six colon two eighty-one. And embed it right there, then our ordinance is exactly what the state statute is.
If you want our ordinance to be what the state.
That's right.
If you want it.
But you can't, but you can't be a lower standard. You can be a higher standard. Well, that's what he's saying we are. And you're saying you can have it any way you want, but no, you can't make it.
You can be a higher.
Yeah, you can be a higher.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. I'm just saying it doesn't have to be theirs. That's all.
Yeah.
The state statute doesn't have to be.
No, I got you. That's all I'm saying.
Jeff's point, you know, you brought this up a few minutes ago that, you know, if you have a restaurant and somebody decides to hold the church service in the back room, then you allow them to. Does that, you know, does that knock you out of being able to serve or alcohol?
No, because your license, your business is licensed as a restaurant. It's not licensed as a church. And you file taxes as a restaurant. You follow all the business rules as a restaurant. I mean, it would be like a maniacal conception. You hold a church fair and now you're fair.
Well, we have this, we have this public hearing. Uh, Ira will be here to discuss this along with anybody else who wants to.
Sure.
We must go with her. We we have small group Bible studies in every restaurant and coffee shop in the city at various times, so.
But but you're going with a group.
To somebody else's.
Just somebody else's establishment, you know, because what what I was just thinking is like an FCA group at a school may go to a restaurant and have a banquet or whatever. And they may pray and they may do, but they're their own group going into an establishment and not the restaurant turning it into a Christian atmosphere as well as doing everything else.
Because I think it opens the, I think this opens a much larger, I think this opens a Pandora's box that isn't realized. I mean, what do we say, like, okay, you're a church that owns, so if your five hundred one exceed, you are not paying taxes. You don't, you're not required to. Um, are we requiring them not to have their servers, they're not allowed servers, they're volunteers, are they not licensed?
Well, I hear, all the discussion has gotten beyond this and it's a matter of what is a church? And I, that's why, that's why I I I'm definitely open to what what Rick pointed out. Maybe we need to look at.
Do you have time to do that before the next meeting to get, you know, to find the courses to free court and free eat?
I have time, but if it's if it's just making this one change, we certainly have time to make that one change. The reason we brought it up for discussion tonight is because it has been a discussion in the past and so before. It typically when it's a council member coming with a a ordinance change, y'all take a vote whether to authorize me to change the ordinance. And whether it needs to be just this change or whether somebody else says, oh, yeah, I want to open it up to this or that. So if this is the only change we're doing, we can have the ordinance drafted and proposed at the next meeting. If other people are wanting to have other changes to it, you know, we can either draft it as councilman y'all proposes and then y'all vote on that. Or we can say, hey, let's take a period, time to research this, whatever y'all want to do. Um.
We're in the public here.
The issue is, I think that the definition of a church, I would have to do a lot more research to see what has been defined. But I suspect that that is something that can change a lot. You know, there are a lot of different religions. There are a lot of different beliefs. There are a lot of different definitions of churches. Um, and so I'm hesitant to lock into a rigid definition of that. Because I suspect as soon as we do, they'll come out another ruling that changes that as well, you know? Um. I don't have a problem adding the word exclusively, except that we'll have this other argument about, well, what if my knitting circle meets in the church? It's no longer exclusively used as a church. Then you go back to the issue of, well, are they licensed as a business or licensed as a church? For mustard seed, they're licensed as a business. That's their primary function. Um, it's my understanding that they do meet the alcohol requirements, the sixty forty, and the alcohol is a small portion of their business. Um, but it it just came up because it was one of those things where it's like, well, we're looking at the three hundred feet right now. We're looking at another church down the road that's not following building codes. Where, you know, they're coming in here and saying they're not a church and then there's a thing coming out in the paper about it. So it was just kind of a totality of the circumstances that we're on it all too ahead. I think we do need to address it. But it's up to y'all as to how fully you want to define things and and how long you want to take towards all of them, you know?
Well, I don't know how much this matters, but what we voted to lift the agenda on was to discuss section ten dash one oh two. You know, and Amber has made some really, really great points. But what we voted to lift the agenda and discuss was section ten dash one oh two. And what what Jim was asking was for, to allow Stephanie to make that change to match what the state says. And so I think that that's what our vote is on now. And if anybody else wants to bring up something else, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's that's correct. And and even if we do make this change and it passes through, then when they go to reapply for the license. You know, that church piece will be taken out of it because they're not used exclusively as a church. So that won't be in question anymore. But their percentages and everything else will remain the same. The requirements on kitchen and all of that will remain the same.
But I still think that you have room for for discussion and room to.
Read to me, I'm sorry, is that, I mean, this is literally the first time I've seen it. Um, what, so we're changing, so the state says exclusively as a church, or we say, what is?
So the state says, when prohibited by municipality, by municipal or parish ordinance. No permit shall be granted to any premises situated within three hundred feet or less.
Right.
As fixed by the ordinance of a public playground. Of a building used exclusively as a church, synagogue, public library, school or full-time daycare center is defined in so and so. The the difference between that and ours is ours says, under the exceptions clause of beverage and low alcohol content permitting. All alcohol beverage businesses are prohibited within three hundred feet of a church. So I'll stop right there. If right there you add within three hundred feet of a building used exclusively as. And then kick back up with a church, a synagogue, library, playground, then that mimics the state. So like the mayor said, is is that what we want to do? If that's what we want to do, then it's literally cut and paste of exactly the same five words. If not, then maybe it's something different.
Something else came up and is that there's beer served at Mathis Second Church Fair. Okay, so right now, if somebody says a church, we could, we could argue that the the grounds of that church is considered a church, that could knock them out. If we say a building, you says, then you can say during that building, you can start, you can start alcohol right here. So to me, it it doesn't clean it up for them, it cleans it up for things that could be questioned in 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 the future. As well, uh, as well as, yes, what is what Jim brought up about, you know, why they decided to want to leave the back room. This just cleans it up. I'm not opposed. In fact, I I think there's maybe a lot of value in what what Rick's asking for in defining a church. I I do. I mean, it's really cleaning things up and I know it makes your job easier, makes our our job easier, make a lot of people's job easier, you know? Uh, but today, like reported, I thank you that we, I have to just to discuss this one, this one second ordinance.
Sorry, that just says low alcohol?
No, I think I think Jim.
I did do that in there.
Okay, I didn't know, but say if it was just saying low, so I'm saying, I was about to say, well, if we're doing it below, they've got a high.
Well, the ordinance though, out of, uh, what what's it called? Um. Yeah, I guess it was many code. It didn't, I was thinking it was a different name, but anyway. This is Code of Ordinances, City of Down Springs, Louisiana, chapter ten, alcoholic beverages. Article three, permits, division three, beverages of low alcoholic content.
Right. Because we have allowed, didn't allow high alcohol content to be, so.
And wine by definition is a high alcohol content? Yeah, okay. See, there's probably a lot more to this that needs to be.
That's what I'm saying, once you, yeah. Like, when you go for alcohol, like we have, I understand that you, I mean, we all know that the ordinances or parts in the ordinance that that go out the code. And it looks like when you're looking at this one, that it only affects this or it only goes towards a church. But that's what I'm saying, if we open this, then we're fixing to open the alcohol ordinance. And you you, it's, I mean, I know what you're saying, I know why you're doing it, but when you look at it from everyone, there there is a plethora of reasons. I just don't know if it is, it, I mean, we'll discuss it, but please, I mean, I think when it, it's just such a. Yeah, and I mean, I don't know if this is a big of a, I think it's a, I feel like, I don't believe it's a smaller change than what it will affect. The ripples that it will shoot out across the ordinances and across enforcement and across regulation are going to not be ripples and will be tight lines. It will really affect a lot more.
I think you'll find this is not unique to our municipalities though. Every municipality around has this verbiage that we're suggesting that we move it to. So. A little bit, yes.
Okay, because I asked for proof.
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, I I I brought enough to make the point out of the state statute.
Because I asked for proof.
The, I I think you'll, so the point that I'm trying to get at is whatever we anticipate as a difficult situation down the road. If all of the other municipalities around us are doing the same thing, then we have a boilerplate to go to. And to see how they've addressed the same thing and what circumstances have arisen as a result of it. So we're we're not really reinventing anything here.
Um, I'm I'm gonna say, I don't feel that there's need to change it. I mean, unless you're, I mean, if we're saying that ours needs to match the state code, well, then I guess we should go draw our own ordinances and they shall match. Let's just go ahead and abolish it. Let's drop that restaurant one. I mean, if that's what we're saying, let's redo, uh, wine should go under beer because that's what the state says, hobbies shouldn't only be liquor. And, um, we should start enforcing all the rules. So big mics can't have their separate bar. Um, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of restaurants that are about to kick some rocks. Um, Lashin, they'll be affected even though they're a brewery. Um, if we go through and instead of saying, hey, you're a brewery, we went through and did special, did we give you special permits? Well, no, the state has regulations for breweries. I'm gonna say like, there's a lot of stuff we don't have that matches the state because we want to be able to hold to a higher standard. And we want to be able to go in and say, hey, we realize that these are our regulations, but you have a variance for this or, I mean, they do mustard seed for coming in. We've had where people have done ice cream and alcohol and we decide ice cream is a food and it's okay.
I guess my question would be, did we intend initially to exclude multi-use facilities? Or did we just incidentally have that excluded from our text? Which was included in the state text and all the other municipalities in the area? If in fact we meant to do that, then you're right. That's clearly something that we see as a a character of our statute.
Our standard.
Yeah, a higher standard.
Yeah.
Or a different standard either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The reason we had that ordinance was to prevent bars from moving into the city.
Right.
That was the purpose of that.
But was that voted on by the people?
No, I think it was, yeah, that's a long time ago.
Well, it was. We did, we did bring four or five.
Oh, you know, it might have been.
It was in like two thousand and.
That's been a long time.
Four.
The sixty forty.
Yeah, a long time ago and I think it was voted by.
It was.
So we're gonna change this, we have to go back to the vote with the people again?
For that one last week. Sixty forty for sure. We opted that when LaShin.
Not doing what Jim's saying.
It was to be a brewery.
But yeah.
We looked at that and we said, no, that falls under the sixty forty. The vote, you know, that all went to a vote. The people voted not to do this, this and this. And so if that's what you're wanting to change, we have to go back to the the people. But if you want to come in as a restaurant and you meet your sixty forty, then you can do that. And so LaShin filed as a restaurant, honestly.
One thing that came up is we were starting to get the hotels that were looking at us and they wanted to be able, not that any of them have it, but they wanted to be able to have a bar area. We had the bigger, um, chain restaurants like the Chili's that was coming in. And they wanted to be able to have Sunday alcohol sales and we didn't have Sunday at the time so that they could do football. So there was about four or five things that we put on the the, um, for a vote of the people. And I want to say like three passed and two didn't or four passed and one didn't, something like that. And the one that didn't was an outright bar.
Exactly.
You know?
And then that was, I know at least twice since I had a business, I went to the vote for a bar. I'm just saying, I I believe our constituents want us to hold businesses to a higher standard. And that's just really, I feel like that's that's we should hold them to a higher standard. And if we don't, I don't, I don't see why we'd get it this far. I mean, there's, there's restaurants, there are restaurants that will get closed down. Multiple, three that I know of.
Yeah, I do too.
Um, ones that had been in this town for thirty years, all the ones that had people that had worked in ours. I mean, there's a lot that we did and our constituents were happy that we did it. Because they wanted, they did not want our thing with people being held to a higher standard. They were happy with them. So I don't know if change it as they.
I think this is a little bit different though, because we're not, they're not like teetering on the brink of becoming a real bar. And that's the problem. It's more of the the church aspect.
Right.
It's the problem. It's not really the alcohol consumption that's the aspect here. It's it's the fact that they are serving alcohol and it's the church aspect. So it's, it is a little bit different than what we've dealt with in the past.
But I question that because when you filed a license for our city on alcohol sales, you just write it in. We don't ask for invoices. We do not ask for register receipts. We very much trust our businesses. We hold them to a higher standard. We trust them and we ask them to do what they pay before us and told us they were doing. So if you then change it to hold, I mean, he, there was an article, which I'm assuming he was interviewed for, it said it. I I, if he was not holding, if he did not follow through what we were told, I feel like that is our responsibility to enforce that.
He did follow through with the alcohol content, the sixty forty ratio. I really should.
I just checked that. She pulled that.
I can't tell you, I can't quote to you what she requires them to submit or what she pulls from them. But, um, she does check that and I think they have to report that to the A T C as well. So that's, maybe that part is, and they did meet that part. I think the question is just whether they're being used exclusively as a church. So this change would allow them to have church in a building that happens to serve alcohol. It would also allow a restaurant that served alcohol to come and build next to one of our existing churches without having to follow this ordinance, you know? It, I think the ripple effect might be more of the the bar that wants to go next to the playground coming to say, well, you changed it for churches, now change it for playgrounds, you know?
I think those are the kind of ripple effects that you'll, that you'll have immediately. I know, I mean, I know what you're saying. I I I understand what you're saying, but I will say, and I mean, I I, with that, I recall, um, for twenty years of which you wrote it out. And from the state, you also just write it out, but the state will come and inspect. I can say we have not had opening sections for our, she's not here, ten years, none under Gina Willmac. I don't believe there's been any under them.
But if somebody were to come to complain, we would send somebody out to check.
Well, of course we're not.
So of course it's there. Like you said, we are using the outer system, but there's an avenue there, the mayor's saying, to go have somebody. We want our ordinance to comply, but to me this, and again, you know, I think this, this is what we discussed when it's introduced. But, uh, basically just to me, this cleans up two things, you know? Um, the word exclusive and also the word building, because right now we're just saying church. So where's the church? Is it who? Is it the fence? Is it the grass? Is it the curb? Is it the building? This cleans that up too.
I think that what's on the table, I'm gonna go back to it again, is the fact that we're addressing, do you want to allow Stephanie to make these five-word changes into section ten dash one oh two and bring it back to the next meeting? I definitely think we all five have homework to do in between now and then. But do you want to allow Stephanie to make those few changes and bring it back to the next meeting and and have more discussion? I mean, it's either you do or you don't.
So we could pass a resolution, all agreeing with them to make the change, or we can make the change ourselves and just introduce it. Uh, I'm I'm okay with the with the resolution. We already discussed it. We already know what we want done, so.
Like a resolution to change it?
A a resolution and basically a group opinion.
Yeah.
Uh, asking Stephanie to make the change based on. Uh, asking Stephanie to make the change based on our discussion, and then when we look at it.
You have a formal resolution, but that's what you're doing basically.
You're just, you're just authorizing her to do that.
Pretty well surmised how it's gonna shake out.
I disagree, I disagree, because I'm very interested in this discussion, I'm very interested in public input. I feel like now there's some things that have been said that, that I need to look into myself a little bit more, but by no means am I one that wants to shut somebody down by saying, no, I, I don't want you to go any further with this. I think that you have the opportunity to put this out in front of the people, and it may pass and it may fail, you know? I don't know, but I think that you, you should have that opportunity, if you want that.
Stephanie, you said that Ira said, I quote, that, remove the quote, that the particular business we're talking about said, I quote, no, we will not be holding church services here, end quote, and you stand by that?
That's what I was told.
Okay.
Can we rethink to ask that question?
When you start putting a conversation, when you start trying to, you know, when you start putting a conversation between two or three or four people, and you're trying to make decisions by that, it's really tough, that's why, when you fill out an application, I am a restaurant, I am a bar, I am a church, you know, whatever it is, I mean, to me, that's what you are, you know, I, I think it's a very slippery slope.
Yeah, I want to address the, the question I was asked, though, which is, you know, were they asked that? Yes, they were asked that, they said they would not be a church. The reason they were asked that is because prior to opening the mustard seed, their church, five oh one C three, held an event called Theology on Tap regularly at LaChen. So when they came in, and the same five oh one thirty is asking for the business license, it was like, oh, y'all are the people who do that, how cool, let's, are you, are you gonna do that in this new place, are you moving that over here? And they said, no, we're not moving yet, we're not having church here. And so they applied for the license as a business and not as a church. That was asked also because we know we have to follow this rule, we know we have the ordinance on the books.
That's more of a reason to do what Rick said, to find. To address that definition, but again, so I also, so, so I am, I, so I am making a motion uh, uh, for a resolution to authorize Stephanie to change this one sentence, one sentence to match state.
Change the one sentence and bring it back to y'all for the next meeting.
I'll note it on the next session.
Right.
Jane.
Wait.
Discussion and approval, I'll second that, and that, or do you want more discussion?
No, I'm gonna say, he's saying for her, for us to come back at the next meeting and discuss her changing it.
Yeah, we, we can't change it tonight.
She's gonna write it back.
Right, that's what I'm saying, like, we're not saying.
Here's the reason that I'm asking tonight, before, before bringing you a final ordinance, you know, sometimes we just introduce, introduce an ordinance without having to authorize us to do an ordinance. When it's something that has been highly debated in the past, we did the same thing with the RV ordinance recently. If, if we introduce an ordinance, we authorize public hearing, we advertise that ordinance, and then we get to the point where we're ready to vote on it, and substantial changes are made when that vote is proposed, we then have to go back through the entire process again. So I would rather make substantial changes during this drafting phase,
Right.
than introduce the thing, go through the expense of advertising it, have a public hearing, then decide to make substantial changes, then do the whole thing over again. That's gonna take mustard seed twice as long to get to the point where they want to be, you know? If that's the way that y'all decide to go. If that's not the way that y'all want to go, then we have the opportunity to draft whatever you would like to draft at this stage. And so that's why we brought it for discussion now, to see if we can get some of those substantial changes under wraps before we propose something new, you know?
And once we make those changes, does this come up before public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
It has to. Yeah, that's what I'll.
So.
So if you're undecided, two couple of things.
With Peter, write the resolution, I write, write the ordinance change, we will, we will read it in the next meeting.
And introduce it.
And we will introduce it for a public hearing at the following meeting.
Right.
And then, and then at the public hearing, we will vote.
Will this include the nominations of the generations?
No, this is just the, that's right, alteration to ten dash one oh two.
So based on discuss, tonight's discussion, my resolution is to change that one sentence to match state. And Robert?
I second it. So we have a motion by Gilbert, seconded by Poole, Matt Cork, would you call the vote?
Dugos, no. Gilbert?
Yes.
Lamb Williams, yes. Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right.
Question to adjourn.
Question to adjourn, my Lamb Williams, seconded by Poole.
Dugos? Yes. Gilbert?
Yes.
Lamb Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
We just break the law there.